Well, good evening. We would like to thank Mrs. Jarrett, who is her ninth year with B. with the Forney ISD. And she accompanies Forney High School, Warren, Timmer, and Ray. She is their accomplice at all those campuses. Thank you for all you do for our students. Give her another round of applause.[21.23][21.23][applause] I am Greg Ferris and president of the Forney ISD Board. And I do hereby call this Board of Trustees meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum present and the time in meeting that has been posted according to the law. The meetings are open to the public, although there are meetings where public comments and questions from the audience are confined to the time designated to citizens addressed to the board. This time, we'll move on then with more of our introductions. At this time, Reverend Haley Schatz from First United Methodist, please make your way to the microphone. Reverend, we'd like to thank you and First United Methodist Church, whom partners at Forney ISD. Would you all rise for the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Mighty God, as we have gathered here tonight, we are reminded of your words in Proverbs 22:6. Start children off on the way they should go, and even when they are old, they will not turn from it. Lord, it is a holy work to raise and teach children. I thank you for our school board gathered here tonight and their diligence in making the education of our future leaders a priority. While we pray for our leaders tonight, that you would continue to offer your wisdom, guidance, and strength. We lift up the students of Forney ISD to you today, that you would guide them to the path that you have set before them. Lord, draw near to our teachers and the classroom. May they rely on your Holy Spirit throughout the day. Bless them with an outpouring of love and grace as they walk alongside students with many different upbringings. We have seen your kingdom breaking in all around Forney. Lord, continue to make yourself known in our schools. Protect our students, our staff, and faculty. Watch over our families and community. Lord, we ask you now to be present in this meeting, offering your wisdom and encouragement. May all glory be yours, Almighty Father. Amen.
Amen. May be seated. Moving on to Item B, we'd like to ask Mr. Josh Garcia, principal from Forney Middle School. He'll introduce our student of the month. And also have Mr. Rod E. Rivera, better known as Rod E., because I can't pronounce it real good. I apologize. Assistant Principal of Wilson Elementary, he'll introduce our students of the month also. Josh?
All right. Good evening, Dr. Terry's School Board. This evening, I get the privilege of introducing everyone to Warren Student of the Month. This is Samuel Ruiz. Samuel's here tonight with his mom and dad, Bruno Ruiz, and Chantel LaSalle. Samuel's in the eighth grade and is a product of Forney ISD. He attended Johnson Elementary and then moved on to Ray Intermediate. He is in all advanced classes and is very active in our theater departments. He will actually be playing the role of the wizard in Oz, and so upcoming Spring Musical. So, we're excited to see him there. It wasn't very hard to get teachers to say all the great things about Samuel. They couldn't stop bragging about him and just the type of person that he is. His history teacher stated that Samuel is a great student. He is respectful and kind to everyone. You can always count on Samuel to be totally dependable and honest. I wish every kid in the school could all have Samuel's characteristics. His RLA teacher and former fifth grade teacher stated that Samuel is an impressive young individual. He consistently greets me each morning with a smile and a positive demeanor. His contributions to class discussions demonstrate thoughtful insight and strong understanding of the material. He interacts well with his peers, and I can rely on him to collaborate effectively with any group, ensuring that everyone feels included. Having had the pleasure of teaching Samuel in the fifth grade, his teacher, and again this year, his teacher stated that it is truly remarkable to witness the confidence that this young man has displayed and grown. Samuel's favorite subject is algebra. He says that it's just simpler than reading, according to him. He would like to use his math skills and passion for science to one day become a doctor of infectious disease. Pretty cool. Maybe at the OC one day, we'll have something like that. You never know. He knows he really wants to help people, and that's his main goal. It is my honor again to recognize Samuel Ruiz as our Warren Student of the Month.[290.33][290.33][applause]
What has noticed? Good evening, distinguished board. It is my pleasure to introduce our first ever Student of the Month from Wilson Elementary Dual Language Academy, Ms. Chloe Sahaski. I've been practicing just like, exactly. So, and I told her, like, you've been practicing all day. And still, I butcher it. I digress. Sorry. Chloe's in fourth grade. She consistently demonstrates hard work, kindness, and a positive attitude in and out of the classroom. She excels in math and reading, and both English and Espanol. Both. She does very well. She's always eager to learn and help others. Her teachers describe her as a positive, respectful, and self-motivated student. In addition to her academic success, she is also an active participant in the Student Council and Honor Choir. During our Spring Busathon fundraiser, Chloe served as a representative. And she was known as Courageous Chloe, and she came and told us every morning something new that we had to work on. And she helped us reach our, we doubled our goal, right? So, in part due to Courageous Chloe. Outside of school, y'all better watch out. Chloe enjoys taekwondo. She shows dedication and creativity in everything that she does. She's a wonderful example of perseverance and leadership, inspiring peers always. You should see her, how she's working with her pre-K babies in the morning when they go to eat breakfast. She's there to greet them. Just overall amazing. So, congratulations, Chloe, on our very first ever Student of the Month for Wilson Elementary. Thank you.[405.31][405.31][applause]
Would you please rise for the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, immeasurable, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one nation.
As we continue, we'd like to do some student recognitions at this time. We'd like to ask Ms. Janay Glanton, Director of Theater and Dance, to please come to the microphone.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Terry, and guests. Forney ISD Fine Arts is proud to recognize our cheer organizations this evening. Recognizing first, Warren Middle School Cheer. Our Warren Middle School Cheer team had an incredible year with multiple recognitions and awards, including NCA National Champions, 2025 Game Day, Junior High Middle School Small Division. And here they are coming in with this massive trophy.[568.41][568.41][laughter] This incredible team also earned the NCA State of Texas Champions, NCA North Texas Regional Champions, Best Use of Props, Technical Excellence Award, Sideline Spirit Award, and second place at the Crandall Cheer Invitational. A very successful year for Warren Middle School Cheer.
Okay, we have more coming, so moms and dads, get your phones ready if you don't want to take pictures.
Our next group is our Forney High School Cheer Team. Our Forney High School, yes.[671.44][671.44][applause] Our Forney High School Cheer Team also had an incredible year with multiple recognitions and awards, including UCA North Texas Regional Results, fourth place. First place 6A Mustang Invitational Cheer Competition, High Point Grand Champion for the entire contest. First place Large Conference, first place 6A, Best Crowd Leading, and Best Fight Song. Sixth place out of 76 teams at UIL State Cheerleading Competition. I also want to recognize cheerleaders, don't go too far. I want to recognize our cheer academic All-State Award winners. These cheerleaders not only excel in the classroom, but they also excel in their cheer competitions. Here are our cheer academic All-State winners, Jordan Anton Wright, Haley Adaway, Carly We have one more group.
Do you have another group?
Yes, sir. We also want to recognize our cheer All-State winners. We have 6A All-State Cheerleader Kaitlyn Everett and Kylie Williams.[813.12][813.12][applause] We also have our 6A All-Star Legacy Cheerleader Kylie Williams.[826.56][826.56][applause]
Moving on with recognitions, we'd like to ask Ms. Mel Harland, Director for Engagement and Higher Education Partnerships, as she'll be sharing some other student recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. I am so excited to recognize and celebrate two outstanding ladies who represented Forney High School in the State UIL Congress Debate Competition down in Austin in March. Their hard work, dedication, and commitment to excellence have not only showcased their individual talents, but also brought pride to our Forney family. After finishing second in the regional competition, losing by mere points to a formidable Tyler team, these students represented Forney for the first time at the state level. Please join me in congratulating Annabelle Dew and Jessica Mathieu, along with their coaches, Dante and Amber Enriquez, lovingly known as the Enriquezes. We are so incredibly proud of their achievements and know this is only the beginning for them. Thank you, ladies, for your hard work and for inspiring us all.[912.04][912.04][applause]
Parents anymore? Okay. I'd like to introduce Ms. Sarah Smith, Executive Director, Future Ratingness.
Good evening, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and members of the board. I am lucky enough to not do just one, but three different student groups from CTE that have all made it to state. So, first, we're going to start with our DECA team members. DECA is for Preparing Emerging Leaders in Entrepreneurship and Business. We have our student-based enterprise, Blooms, who qualified for Nationals and earned a gold certification for the first time in history. And then we had several team members that participated at state in March.
Ms. Smith?
I get to keep going.
Yeah. Couple more.
Our next group is Taffy, our Texas Association of Future Educators, which obviously is very close to our heart. These students competed at state in February, several of them placed at Nationals, which will be in July, in Orlando. All of these students are dedicated to helping our younger kids in the classroom and showing them how to be better educators in the future.
Congratulations. Good job.
All right. And our largest group, and the one I'm most thankful that I do not have to pronounce their awards and the animals that they won the awards for, our FFA group. All of these students are here for placing, and you can see the enormous amount of students that we had place at the Kaufman County Junior Livestock Show. They just took everything home, all of the hardware. Several reserve champions, reserve grand champions, blue ribbon, and best in show. These students spend countless hours, as do their advisors, on taking care of business when they go to shows.
Our next presenter is Mr. Macca Jones, Director of Visual and Digital Art.
Good evening, Dr. Terry, President Ferris, and School Board. This evening, we are pleased to recognize five Forney ISD students for their achievements in the 102nd Annual Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Contest. For over a century, this prestigious contest has inspired innovative ideas among creative youth across the nation. Notable alumni include actor Robert Redford, artist Andy Warhol, and author Stephen King. We are proud to include the names of our talented students in this esteemed group. They are Alicia Magar, honorable mention, 11th grade, Jennifer Holliday is her teacher; Addison Donald, honorable mention, 12th grade, Jennifer Holliday; Malat Ali, honorable mention, 12th grade, Jennifer Holliday; Arian Arthur, Silver Key Award winner, North Forney High School, Jennifer Holliday; and Alexa Austin, Golden Key Award winner, 12th grade, teacher Tara Torres.
And then Ms. Tina Spain, Director of Guidance and Social Services.
Yes. I'm Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and members of the board. I'm excited to recognize and celebrate several of our outstanding counselors who are recently honored with the prestigious Crest Award for the 23-24 school year. Congratulations to Lauren Burke at Griffin Elementary, Amber Reese, and Amanda Pearson, who served as counselors at Ray Intermediate last school year. Lauren is from Griffin Elementary. We also extend congratulations to principals for their leadership in supporting these exemplary counseling programs. The Crest Award, which stands for Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas, recognizes school counseling programs that demonstrate exceptional leadership, advocacy, and a strong commitment to supporting students in their academic, career, and personal development. Once again, congratulations to these remarkable leaders for being named among an elite group of schools across the state for counseling excellence.
And then Ms. Kristin Zestable, Executive Director of Communications.
Yes, good evening. I am honored to get to present this next award. A few months ago, Brittany Taylor from Henderson Elementary was actually nominated by her peers for the ARIS Thrive Grant for Autism Educators from Stages Learning. The grant strives to recognize educators who are making the difference in lives of autistic students. They interviewed her as one of the top 10 candidates, and then they selected only three from hundreds of submissions from across the nation. Not only was she selected, but we surprised her last week with information, and it includes a $10,000 grant for autism resources and support. So, we'd like to thank her for her dedication to our students and honor her tonight.[1456.84][1456.84][applause]
And we have the next exciting business partnership awards. Our recognition is Ms. Robin Pierce, Chief of Innovation and Information, will introduce.
First, I would like to recognize OC Junior, which was previously a student-operated business at the OC. We will be transitioning a new concept to OC Playtime, starting this summer and then going into next fall. So, our students, our education and training students, will actually transition to running this, well, we can't talk, this student-operated business, which we were operated during the school day, as well as on nights and weekends, and continue with birthday parties.[1515.64][1515.64][applause] Our next one, Penn High, is an emerging indoor golf entertainment center, operated by Tanner and May Lee Patchett. It will be located on the west side of the OC, offering advanced TrackMan simulators with access to over 200 virtual golf courses suitable for various skill levels. The facility caters to our golf academy students, our high school golf teams, as well as the general public, providing immersive golfing experiences for nights and weekends.[1561.92][1561.92][applause] And they are opening Saturday, so if you want to play some golf. See them on your way out. Is Tony here? Okay. Yes. The next one is Tony's Pizza. Unfortunately, he is not able to make it with his family tonight, but Tony's Pizza is a family-owned and operated establishment that serves authentic Italian cuisine. It will offer menu items as pizza, subs, and cannolis and tiramisu desserts.
Thank you all. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. It's 7:33, and we'll continue with the meeting. Starting with reports, the next four reports are reports only, require no action from the board. First up is 6A Monthly Financial Report, Mr. John Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight's financial report includes activity through February, which is eight months into our fiscal year, beginning with the general fund. To date, we've received $151 million in revenues, and we've spent $156 million. And the largest revenue item for February was tax collections. It's totaled $13 million. At this point in the year, we've collected about 97% of our tax levy. We've expended 69% of appropriations, which is the same as it was last year for benchmarking purposes, so we're pretty well on track. In food service, we had, we received $7 million in revenue to date, and it's spent around seven, pretty close to $7 million, 7.2. Our average daily lunch participation rate for the month was 50%. In our debt service fund, we've received $57 million in revenue, and we've spent $54 million. Tax collections for the month was $9 million. We've earned, expended 100% of our appropriation at this point. There's not going to be a whole lot of activity going forward in the debt service fund, other than tax collections, which, again, we're right at 97% collected, so not a whole lot of activity from this point on. And then finally, our cash investment report for the month, total cash on hand in the general fund, food service, debt service, and capital project fund was $237 million at the end of the month. So, that's the, excuse me, the financial report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Well, here now, we'll move on to 6B, Summary Finance Update.
As boards aware, the summary of finance is DEA's report on state funding that school districts are entitled to receive. At the beginning of the year, the amount that the district will receive in cash is set, and that's done by average daily attendance and other and that's done by average day attendance and other projections that we give them at the beginning of each biennium. So at this point, it's a couple of years old, but that's what they use to flow the cash to us. We received an update, they do update it throughout the year, and we received an update in March that included updated property values, tax collections, and economically disadvantaged students. They also will take, on the district planning estimate side of the ledger, and project what they feel like we're actually be entitled to on an ADA basis, based on PMS data that we submitted to them in the fall. So when you look at the report, there's two columns. There's the LPE side, which that's what, the side that they're going to actually make cash payments to us on, and then there's this district planning estimate side of the DPE, which is what they're projecting that we'll, in fact, actually earn for the school year. And so they're paying us on about 18, a little over 18,000 kids, and we're projected to have an ADA just over 17,100. So when you look at it, our entitlement for the year, we're projecting 111 million, just north of that, on the maintenance and operations side, through the foundation school program and available school fund, and another 5.6 million for additional state aid for home status exemption in the INS fund. And so when you get to the last page of the report, on line seven, it shows that we're, they're projecting an overpayment to the district of 10.9 million dollars. And we've done some internal estimates and put our own FTEs and things like that in the funding formula, and we were projecting that we'll likely actually be underpaid, or excuse me, overpaid 5.9 million. And so just want to point out to the board, like we've done, last year was the first time we were actually overpaid in quite some time, but that amount will show up in our balance sheet as a liability. It will not be in revenues, and it will not be in our fund balance at the end of the year. So if there's any questions about that, certainly be happy to answer them.
I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Chase. 6C is the School Board Compliance of Continued Education Hours. I'm happy to report that all board members have completed their hours and/or exceeded those, so thank you, board members, for taking time to do that. We appreciate all the hours you give to the board and to our students in this community. Moving on to 6D, Notice of Intruder Detection Audit Findings, and there are no findings to report at this evening. Item seven, Public Forum, no one signed up to address the board. Moving on to eight is Consent Agenda. Eight A is approved minutes from the March 3 meeting. Eight B is approved, the budget amendment. Eight C is approved instructional materials and antique certification and provision of instructional materials. Eight D is approved, the Mesquite Regional Day School for the Deaf Shared Services. Eight E is approved, the Tasby Policy Update 124, it's the second and final reading. Eight F approved, Skyward Renewal. Eight G approved, the donation from the Forni Education Foundation. Eight H approved, purchase of modular buildings. Eight I approved, purchase of playground construction. J approved, purchase of Cisco licenses. And K approved, plus the lease of wide area fiber. These can be taken individually or collectively? Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through K, as presented.
Mr. Regan's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item nine, Considering Possible Approval of Policy Revisions, FDA and FDB Local, is the first reading. Mr. Rick Gere.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. School board members, administration's been working with our Tasby Policy Service to consider revisions to local policy FDA, which deals with inter-district transfers, and FDB, which is intra-district. So inter-district is for anyone that's outside our attended zones that might want to come in. Inter, intra is within our attended zone that actually is trying to change campuses, just as a reference. We believe that the adjustments to this, we believe that allowing full-time Forni ISD employees the option to choose where their children attend school supports staff recruitment and retention. Many educators and district employees seek work-life balance, and the ability to place their children in a preferred school provides a meaningful benefit. The recommended revisions to FDA and FDB Local gives our employees the flexibility to choose the campus their child attends if capacity permits. This policy adjustment can enhance job satisfaction, reduce employee turnover, and most of all, it attracts high-quality educators to high-needs campuses. Additionally, it does demonstrate the district's commitment to providing a positive work environment. In addition, in FDB, providing this school a choice for full-time resident Forni ISD employees, we've also, we'd like to recommend limiting student transfers to campuses within their designated feeder pattern. We believe this maintains continuity in student education, allowing for smoother transitions one grade to the next, and this fosters a strong sense of community among the students, the teachers, and families, as peer groups remain intact throughout their academic journey. It also ensures balanced enrollment and resources that we allocate across campuses and prevents overcrowding at specific locations. So at this time, I'd be glad to entertain any questions, as this is a first reading for these two revisions and policy.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Do you have any questions from the board? I hear none. Ms. Spence, would you please add this to the consent agenda for the May meeting, please? Item 10, Consideration Possible Approval, Contract Extensions with Aramark. Mr. Chase?
As boards are aware, we entered into a contract for managed food service with Aramark two years ago, will be two years at the end of this year. The contract allowed us to extend the contract for up to four additional years from the base year, so this would be the second contract extension tonight that we're presenting to you. The contract is, the increase in the contract is tied to the CPI for Food Away From Home, which that index rose 3.6% over the last year, and included in your board book was a proposed meal charge for each type of meal that was served, that those charges would apply to. So we've been satisfied with the service that we've received for the last two years now, and so we're recommending that we approve the contract extension as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have any further comments?
You know, Aramark's been a great partner for us this year. I apologize. Try that again. Aramark's been a great partner for us this year. We've got a lot of good runway with some of the facilities and improvement in quality of our food. Our kids are happy with their options, and we're continuing to expand those, so we would recommend approval of our continued relationship with Aramark this year.
The board, you've heard from the administration. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the contract extension with Aramark as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Amudia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burke Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 11, Consideration Possible Approval, Purchase of Furniture and Fixtures and Equipment for Elementary Number 12. Mr. Chase?
As the board's aware, with past construction projects, we've requested purchasing approval on a not-to-exceed basis, and as we go forward with our planning with Elementary Number 12, which will be in the Los Lomas subdivision, we're asking tonight that you grant us purchasing approval, not to exceed $3 million, for this project for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. We plan to use purchasing cooperatives for this to satisfy the bid laws, and so, you know, it'll just make things more flexible for us and quicker, if we have items that are over 100,000, which is what the board policy currently says, that we bring contracts or purchases that exceed that. So in order to facilitate the speed of purchasing those items, we would request approval for 3 million, not to exceed spending for furniture, fixtures, and equipment on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. I believe this is our, Kim, sixth prototype on this one? Fifth? Sixth? Fifth or sixth? We're getting pretty good at our estimates on our furniture, fixtures, and equipment. However, just a reminder, a lot of these things need longer lead time, so we do appreciate your flexibility in allowing for, sixth prototype, there you go. Allowing for longer lead time, and appreciate your flexibility on allowing us to get ahead of some of this ordering, so we'd recommend approval, whether not to exceed a 3 million.
I have administration's recommendation of board. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the purchase of S. F. N. E. for Elementary Number 12 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Item 12 is closed session. 12A is consultation with attorney. 12B is deliberation regarding potential sale, lease, and purchase of land. Government Code Section 551072. 12C is deliberation regarding ratification employment of professional contract personnel. Texas Government Code 551074. 12D, deliberation regarding contract renewal administration of other professional contracts under Texas Government Code 551074. 12E is deliberation regarding the pursuit of sanctions of educator abandonment under contract in Texas Government Code 551074. 12F is consultation legal counsel regarding legal issues related to sale of real property. 12G, deliberation regarding sale of real property and waterline easement for High Point Specialty Utility District, Texas Government Code 551072. 12H is Safety and Security Intruder Detection Audit Findings, Texas Government Code 551076. At this time, we'll go into closed session. It's now 7:47. It will be dismissed. It's now 8:22, and we'll call this back into open session. Moving on to item number 13, Consideration Possible Approval, Ratification Employment of Professional Contract Personnel, as discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve ratification employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burke Alter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Consideration, number 14, Consideration Possible Approval of Contract Renewal of Professional Contract Personnel. Do I have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion the board approve the contract renewal of professional contract personnel.
I have a motion from Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then item 15, Consideration Possible Approval of Waterline Easement to High Point Special Utility District and Delegate Authority to the Superintendent to negotiate and execute the easement. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move the board approve granting waterline easement to the High Point Special Utility District as discussed in closed session, and delegate authority to the Superintendent to negotiate and execute the easement.
I have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. That's all of our items. I'll turn it over to item 16, then announcements for Dr. Terry.
Thanks, sir. Just a couple of quick announcements, and just wanted to remind everyone, May's a busy time for us in the boardroom, so you have three board meetings in May. One is on May the 5th, that'll be our regular scheduled board meeting Tuesday, and make sure you note that's a Tuesday, May 13th, and we do have to have it that day for Canvas from an election standpoint, for a special call meeting. And then want to point out to you also, the Tuesday, which is May 27th, the day after Memorial Day, that'll be our regular June meeting. So just to point those two out, those out to you, those are a little irregular on our normal dates and times. And then we do have a Shrek musical that you got to hand out for, and I believe they left the date off, but that's this weekend if you're interested in attending, so please feel free to attend. Got lots of great events coming up. Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Do I have any other questions from the board? Okay, it's 8:25, and will be dismissed.